Good evening. I now call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Monday, July 11, 2022 to order. At this time, in lieu of an invocation, I'd ask that you all stand and we'll do a moment of silence in memory of Yopai County Sheriff's Officer, Sergeant Rick Lopez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Sandy Griffiths.
If you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, we are ready for a roll call.
Chairperson Zercher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order, this is not working.
Okay, do we have another one?
It's on. Yes, it is. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Number five is the approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2022 Regular Session Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 13, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to announcements. Any staff announcements? I know Commissioner King want to say a few things, so go for it.
I would. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I have a couple sports-oriented announcements tonight. We have a fantastic indoor football league team called the Northern Arizona Wranglers, and they are undefeated at home. They just won again on Saturday, and there is a playoff game that will be held at the Finley Center on July 23 at 6:05 PM. It's a great family event. I encourage you all to come out. Very good time, very fun. Again, it's Saturday, July 23 at 6:05 PM. You can get your tickets on the Finley website or the Northern Arizona Wranglers team site. The players have been doing a ton of activities and community service work with this community. Great coaching staff, so I'd like to see us try to pack the house, tell everybody you know. That's announcement number one. Announcement number two is there is a great complex here in Prescott Valley that I'd like to bring awareness to. They're called the Wheelhouse. It's a 60,000-square-foot, 12-acre, 14-sports complex, and they have just finished up their BMX biking site, and they are looking for sponsors. So anybody who would be interested in that, and if we could share the word on them, it would be appreciated. So let's keep the sports going in Prescott Valley here. It's a great time to be here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read my statement. My name is Matt Zercher, and I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are surprising number of things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers and not paid employees. So we'll go into our public hearing item and action item this evening. For purposes of hearing everything because they're associated with both of them, we're going to hear both of them at the same time. So public hearing item number one is zoning map change 22-005, a request by Fane Signature Group for Lynx Creek Villages LLC for zoning map change for C-2PAD, from C-2PAD Commercial General Sales and Services Plan to Area Development, to R-1MPAD Residential Single Family Mixed Housing on approximately 7.6 acres comprising of, I won't read all the parcel numbers in, but located on the east side of Village Way, north and south of Village Creek Boulevard and Dewey area, in the Dewey area. Action item number one is Preliminary Development Plan 22-007, a request by Fane Signature Group for Lynx Creek Villages LLC for Preliminary Development Plan for 54 Common Wall Town Home Units on approximately 7.6 acres located on the east side of Village Way, north and south of Village Creek Boulevard in the Dewey area. Presenting this evening is Development Services Director Fernando Gonzalez. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. As you stated, this application is for a zoning map change and a preliminary development plan. The parcel, as you stated, I have it up on the board, is located off of Highway 69 in front of the villages of Lynx Creek. This zoning map change is to change the zoning from C-2 Commercial General Sales and Service to R-1M residential mixed use. This zoning map change from C-2 to R-1M is actually to accommodate your preliminary development plan that's also presented this evening in regards to 54 common wall of townhouses that's proposed to go on the 7.62 acres. This project actually was stated to go in a number of years ago. There was talk about other projects going into this area, but of course, nothing went to fruition. We believe that this is the best use for this site at this time. There was a landscaping plan that was an actual, and you can see this actually shows the C-2PAD, it shows the villages, shows the zoning behind it, the residential manufactured home PAD. This is actually a layout of what we're proposing as part of the preliminary development plan for the units themselves. And as you can see, there are, at the entrance, there are still two commercial pieces of property that are not part of this request this evening. This is actually a floor plan, what those proposed townhouses will be looking like when they put in. As you can see, there's a common wall in between the two. They're 1,800-square-feet units, two-car garages. And this is the floor plan within the units themselves. This is the aesthetics of what the buildings are proposing to look like. So these are the elevations from the front, the rear, and the side. This is the landscaping plan that I was talking about, that they have been submitted. This will be required to be landscaped. I believe that there is talk about some of the residents from the Lynx Lakes helping with some of the plants that are going into this area. We appreciate that. This will be required as part of their permitting process. We will be going through this and also part of the final development plan that needs to go to council. A traffic statement or traffic analysis has been done for this project, and from what I understand, it appears that there will be no changes needed or alterations of the existing road, but a full traffic TIA will be done prior to council. As you can see, these are more of the landscaping. This project is consistent with the general plan, so there will be no changes there. At this time, staff is actually recommending approval of ZMC 22-005 and PDP 22-007. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You would have staff, the professionals from the group is here as well, to answer any questions you may have also.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with questions from the Commission.
Not really a question, but in lieu of old eyes, the packets that we got are virtually unreadable. And I think we had this discussion before that we need to have something that where we can actually see dimensions and things and...
Are we looking for full-blown plans? Or are we looking for...
Well, just something, even if we could take half these sheets and spread them into one, you know, do split them?
Sure, we can do that.
Something that'll enlarge it so that, I know that there's two or three sets of magnifying glasses by board members tonight, and...
I've got mine right here.
But these aren't magnifiers.
Well, that's true.
Just to read, so that would really be appreciated.
Not a problem. Thank you.
I have a comment. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
In the past, when we've had proposals in front of us, we have had density, like how many units per acre. And in fact, I was reading one today from Granville, and I would like to see in the future that we have any proposal before us, because we can't discuss the elephant in the room, but we can talk about density.
Correct.
And I would like to know what the density per acre is on anything we get, particularly multifamily, if we could have that included.
We definitely do. I made notes on that. Any other questions of me? All right.
Are you going to deal with the TIA?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a question. I am thrilled to see that this development coming before us tonight is a perfect example of inclusionary building, and I think it's setting maybe our area on the map, because we know that there are a lot of zoning changes taking place nationally, where they are bringing in a mix of manufactured, they're bringing in a mix of modular, they're bringing in a mix of townhomes, they're bringing in a mix of single-family. And I do feel that this is a good example of expanding our housing requirements, abilities, and new ways to build by bringing in mixed building in our housing toolbox.
Thank you.
You mentioned that we would get a, that the council would get a TIA. We really, as the Planning Commission, should see the TIA before council does.
It's, well, we actually have the person who's going to provide the TIA here this evening, and you can ask her any other questions you might want to ask.
But it would be nice if it was included in our packet.
That's going to be a conversation we'll have after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the Commission for staff?
No.
No.
Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you.
This time, I'll ask the applicant to come up. And if you have a team of people that are going to be speaking, go ahead and bring them all up, and we'll go and introduce them all.
Yeah, Commissioner Zercher, Ron Fane, Fane Signature Group. I am the person seeking for the zoning request change, so appreciate you hearing the case tonight. Thank you very much for that. We have engineering here with Tom Louiso, land planner Peter Burgoyz, traffic, Toby White, and the builder Morgan Taylor Homes, David Kerr, to go and address any of your questions.
So let me start out by, one of the things that, in our packet, you had a neighborhood outreach meeting on May 19, 2022. You said you got two comments, but we never got to see what those comments were. Can you let us know what those comments were about?
We had written comments. We only had two. We had a lot of comments from the audience. The meeting was held at, just after a regularly scheduled HOA meeting, so we estimated about 125 residents in attendance. We gave a presentation. We gave a presentation on traffic, presentation on drainage, presentation on vertical building, presentation on land plan and landscape, and addressed questions of a myriad of sources. Some of the questions ranged from, would this be an age-restricted community? One of the written comments was age-restricted community. It's not planned to be an age-restricted community at the moment and by default. It's likely to be an empty nester based on the size of these units and the confinement of them. They're not conducive necessarily for family living and are targeting a market, in the real estate market, for an empty nester, early retirement or retirement. So that was one of the questions. Another question that we received was, would this project be acceptable to be brought into the villages at Lynx Creek HOA? We would, we sat with and had discussions with the board, and then the board has decided not to pursue including this project into the HOA because it would require 100% of the existing homeowners of the villages of Lynx Creek to be, to have this amended and brought into the HOA. So they do not want to pursue that, so we were not going to pursue being a part of the HOA at all. Will be a separate project from that. Other questions around landscaping were that they wanted to make sure that some of the species that we used were drought-tolerant and also consistent with the look and feel of the villages, and the land planner Peter Burgoyz can address any specifics regarding planting there. Another good question we had was on traffic impact analysis, and Toby White's here to talk about that. While this project isn't really producing a lot of traffic, the homeowners of the villages at Lynx Creek are concerned with access to Highway 69, and so that is a primary focus, is why we're doing a full-blown traffic impact analysis and not just a one-page traffic report. This is a smaller project, so it kind of fits into the gray area where you may or may not need a traffic report. We opted to do a full traffic impact analysis because of the residential population that we're adjoining. And, you know, many more questions, so just a myriad of them. I hope I answered.
Yes, and the reason I bring that up, I had the opportunity to speak to one of the homeowners today in the villages of Lynx Creek, whose property is going to be bordering this. She shared something with me that was very concerning. She was aware that this project was going on, she was aware of the community meeting. She flat-out told me, Matt, I did not go because they will not value my opinion. This will happen anyway. Money talks. And to me, that just feels like some people might have been intimidated and not, didn't go and speak up when they should have. And I feel like if we're hearing that feedback from at least one homeowner, and I'm sure there might be others that feel that way, I feel like we need to do a better job with outreach.
Well, Matt, that troubles me too, that that resident would not feel comfortable enough to show up at a, at a public meeting in their clubhouse. That certainly gives me concern. We've taken every effort we possibly could. We've met with the board a couple of times prior to the regularly scheduled neighborhood meeting to make sure that the board was comfortable with what we were bringing forward. And we also scheduled our meeting, our neighborhood meeting, right after the regularly scheduled homeowners' monthly meeting, so as to be as convenient as possible where the crowd is already gathering. We were told that it was a larger crowd than normal at present, and at 125, I'm sure we didn't get every resident that lives at the villages. There's more than 452 homes there.
Let me also share with you her biggest concern. She had two of them, traffic being the number one. Number two was that she, you know, loves kids, but she did not like the idea that the villages of Lynx Creek is an age-restricted community, 55-plus, and these not being age-restricted. She says she loves kids, she just doesn't want to hear them all the time. And I see that there's really no buffer zone between what you're proposing and the villages of Lynx Creek, especially the properties that back right up to it. And that's a big concern for me. And, you know, I just want to share with you that that is a huge concern that I have, and I think she's not wrong. I also definitely feel that, as much as I do agree with Commissioner Griffiths that it's a good mixed use, I don't feel that it is necessarily appropriate for this area. Everything from Bradshaw to Fane Road, south of the river, north of 69, all manufactured homes, age-restricted, yet we're doing site builds in front of manufactured. I don't think this fits to the community, and I'd like to have you, you know, definitely address that to the Commission.
Well, thank you for the comment, and we have, part of the nature of this project is we have a builder in tow, which I know the Commission enjoys or prefers to see, that what is the project going to look like. So this property is currently in escrow with Morgan Taylor Homes, and Morgan Taylor Homes is a single-family and/or townhome developer. They are not a modular home development, so that's part of the reason. The zoning that Peter or Fernando can address more does, I believe, allow for manufactured housing and/or townhome project, either one to go into it. It's just that the buyer that's at the table today is a stick-built vertical builder, and certainly our deal is contingent on getting zoning in place, and that's what's driving the look and feel of this particular project. We feel that it's a nice transition from Highway 69 to the residential population as a buffer from the busy road that Highway 69 is. These are all going to be single-family-style homes. The current zoning is C-2PAD, which allows for a far more intense use. We wouldn't be here really having that discussion in front of the Commissioners, and allows for us to go 24, 30 feet higher with a project that would be maybe even more intimidating to the villages at Lynx Creek. So we really think that this is a great transition use, a great trade-down from the C-2PAD into the R-1. It's going to be a lot more quieter. It's going to be 54 units of nice housing, and to your point, it is not currently age-restricted.
Real quick, I just wanted to add, piggyback onto something Ron said earlier. You mentioned you've been in talks with the HOA Board for the villages of Lynx Creek. We, you know, we took the project that's being built to the west of the villages of Lynx Creek, manufactured, and it took three times before we actually ended up passing that. And the HOA Board actually ended up doing a letter of support for that project. I mean, again, I feel that, I mean, honestly, I feel like this packet of ours is a little lackluster, and I don't feel that we have a lot of the great information to make a really good decision here tonight. Maybe you can help us, but honestly, I'm going to tell you, this, basically what was in our packet was very lackluster, and I would expect better from the town and from, you know, you guys as well, that I just don't feel that we had enough information in this packet for this project. Because, again, we, going back to, we approved the same, you know, we approved a project for manufacturers to the west of here, it took three times to get it right. I just don't feel that we have every, all the information we need here.
Well, and I appreciate your comments and your pointing out that the previous project did take three times. I think we learned a lot in that process, both with the villages and the existing board at that time, on how to better communicate and bring forth a project. It's not to say that everyone is happy about a change in zoning or a change in use or a vacant lot that will now have a vertical structure on it. I will tell you, though, that I think we went, took a lesson from the previous example that you're citing and developed and crafted our process better so that we were in better communication with the villages at Lynx Creek, which is why I think, you know, we're not, you know, we'd had a good neighborhood meeting, and we had good communication with the HOA Board. I think there are people here today that might speak to that. Certainly, there isn't a large crowd that we gathered the first two or three times, and I think that's testimony to us doing a better job at communicating to the surrounding neighborhood.
So, real quick, one of the things that, in that, you know, development to the west that we approved, and Commissioner Rutherford brought this up one of the last times, so there are no amenities for these homes that you're proposing to build?
I would, I'll turn that over to the home builder.
Okay.
He could address that. It is a, it is a small project, though, to your point.
Okay.
So to address the amenities, we'd...
Go ahead and do me a favor, just state your name for the record.
My name's David Hare from Morgan Taylor Homes. So to address the amenity question, we have purposely put walking trails into the system as a starter, and have been listening to the community and the Planning Commission on any other concerns of amenities. One of the things that we've considered is a dog park in one of the empty parcels, or like a bocce court. So we're a little early in the process to formalize what that amenity might be, but we certainly are open to feedback from the community and the Commission.
Can you address the buffer zone between the properties? If you are planning on that, or you are looking at doing something like that?
So on the northern end of the parcel, the wall will be taken down and rebuilt, so you actually will have a buffer there. In addition, we're going to be putting in additional landscaping and trees into that area. And then on the southern portion, you will have the side yard walls for all of the individual lots, so individual homes will be buffered from the neighborhood. And again, we'll be putting in landscaping. I believe that landscape track is about 20 feet wide with plenty of landscaping in it, so.
Do any other Commissioners have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Morgan Taylor Homes. I have a question for you. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
In our package, we have two different lot layouts. The one that's on the screen now, and then I have another one where the east end, is east my right hand? Is that my west?
That would be correct.
My east?
Yes.
On my east side, there's a different layout of the townhomes. So which layout is correct? This one or this one? They're different.
I think they're both correct.
They're both correct?
Again, if we had blowups, it'd be a little easier to see. That was one of the biggest issues.
Right. Yeah. Okay, I've got it. My accountant set me straight.
Okay.
It's, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, there, okay.
Oh, thank you. So I have a little concern with this layout of what we're looking at here on this end. Those are roads going in between those townhomes, correct?
Correct.
How do we propose to move, let's just say, trash services through that road? Get them turned around? Do they have to back out? How are we going to service people on both sides of that road? Have we given any thought to that?
Yeah, so typically, when I've developed a community like this that has, we call those courts, which is where the Clipper Courts name came from, we will have residents pull their trash from their home to the main street so that trash service stays on the main private street right there.
So I don't want to move in Lot 35 because I'm going to have to haul my trash all the way down to the end?
That is completely up to you. You can buy Lot 38.
Okay. Interesting. So then, do you share that with your potential buyers, so people know?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Commissioner Rutherford?
I'm a little concerned about the idea of age restriction. And, for instance, in the country club, it's known as a senior development, but it is not age-restricted, and school buses do come in and have regular stops, and I always enjoyed seeing school kids around. I realize that when you live next door to a small child, their outdoor voice can be a shriek that could be fairly annoying. However, with the shortage of housing, I'm not sure that it's advisable to age restrict.
But see, I disagree that, I don't think we have a shortage of housing right now, and we really should be taking that into consideration. That, my concern is that this is going next to a 55-plus community. I'm not suggesting we age-restrict, it's just, this is, nothing around, like this area is, this is, this is something brand-new. There's something, nothing like this around, and this is backing up to an age-restricted community. That's my concern. That's my concern.
My concern about it is, what happens when grandparents have to adopt grandchildren?
It happens.
It does happen, and I'm not sure that it's desirable to have it totally age-restricted. I can see that it might be desired by the surrounding people, and if the department feels that's appropriate, I can go along with it, but I do have some reservations.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? I'd like to hear the traffic-
I would, too.
... person real quick, so come on up.
My name is Toby White. I am with a traffic engineer with Lee Engineering in Phoenix, and I've done the traffic studies through a prior employer with both the Desert Pines, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're talking about is the one that's gone, went through a few times. I also did the traffic study for the, now it's called Mulberry Farms, the PV Rentals Project. And so, not that I'm always right, but I have a background, and so I think, rather than me trying to give you a presentation, I'd really rather take your questions, so that I'm not, traffic engineers tend to go off on a tangent. So, the one thing I will say is, to kind of reiterate, not to use it as an excuse, but to reiterate what Ron Fain said, was that normally, for a development that's as small as this, anything that generates fewer than 100 trips during the peak hour, literally all you have, you do a traffic impact statement, it's two or three pages, or when I do it, maybe it's five pages, but in this particular case, and a lot of it was based on my experience when we did go and work with the villages at Lynx Creek as part of the group that did Desert Pines and the two before, the two tries before that, is that I wanted to do extra that would, would speak to the adjacent homeowners, what they think is the traffic issue. And so that, way beyond, goes way beyond what you would typically do in a traffic statement. Also, we wanted to go and talk to ADOT, because while this project is not next to ADOT, and unless, I don't know if maybe they have to do a water line or something like that, but there is no traffic-related reason that they necessarily would have to go to ADOT, because they don't need a permit from ADOT. But I knew that history, based on history, that we should, that was just the right thing to do. And so, it's part, and the reason that the traffic analysis taking a little longer, is that we wanted to make sure, because the neighbors sure know it, it's not just about villages at Lynx Creek out there. It's not just about villages at Lynx Creek in this one other community, which is Desert Pines, there's Quailwood Meadows, and there's Mulberry Farms. And so, we wanted to make sure that we had all those layers, that we grow traffic, that if we count cars in February, that we put a seasonal adjustment. So we've got lots of layers, so that's what's coming. But I can answer the questions for you, it's just not all in right.
I have a quick question with regard to traffic, especially on the west side of Village Way. Now, I remember when we did Desert Pines, there was going to be some widening of that road. Is that still being planned?
That particular segment north of Village Creek is considerably narrower. There's some places along there that are 20, 20 to 22 feet wide, and so that's why they have to widen up there.
Okay.
That is not the case south of Village Creek. It's, I believe it's 24 to 26 feet, the entire length, and I think-
I'm primarily talking on the west side of Village Boulevard.
Oh.
Come on, come on up, please.
Thank you.
Tom, Tom, we use it with Granite Basin Engineering.
Go ahead and speak right into the mic, please.
The section you're speaking to is in front of lots 1 through 12. That is built to the current town section. It's got curb and gutter and sidewalk on one side, so no widening is necessary.
Okay. I just remember, and again, I remember when our conversation during Desert Pines came up, there was a lot of concern about that turn and everything with that.
From that point to the, to the north, towards Desert Pines, that's, that's the section that was brought up last time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Ms. White. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
So, part of our duties that are bestowed upon this commission and any other planning and zoning commission throughout Yavapai County is to consider traffic. It's a big part of our decision-making. I understand what's going on with work schedules, ADOT. Ms. White, based on your professional knowledge, do you feel that what is going to be moving forward with the TIA would be an effective mitigation measure for all traffic concerns? Even though we haven't seen any TIA, what do you think is going to be the outcome?
I think that, and as the neighbors have expressed, the big focus is on the intersection of 69 and Village Creek Boulevard. It's sitting out there, it's a stop sign controlled intersection, and it is, you know, at times it's a challenge to get out onto 69. Now, there is also the option, just to put it out there, is that, that traffic can go down to Bradshaw Mountain Road, where there is a big intersection with the traffic signal, and it's actually going to be closer to some of these units. But even if that's not the case, eventually, that intersection of 69 and Village Creek Boulevard is going to need a signal. And ADOT, and this is rare, usually, we are, try to get ADOT to allow a signal someplace where ADOT doesn't want to have it, but ADOT has identified this intersection as a future signalized location since, back, since 1995, and that has not changed. They have what's called the State Route 69 Access Management Policy or some plan, and it identifies all the way from Prescott to Dewey, where every location there are going to allow an ultimate condition to be signalized. This is one of them. And so, it's a matter of time of when that is appropriate. You can't just put up a signal anytime. It has to be warranted. And so, as these layers of traffic come along, and background traffic grows, at some point, that signal is going to be warranted, and ADOT is going to allow it to be signalized.
So do you, Ms. White, in your professional work of traffic, do you continually monitor this intersection for ADOT over the future?
Well, it's funny that you ask that, because usually I would say no, but in this particular case, I've done so many traffic studies for this particular, around this particular intersection, or these four intersections. We have counts from 2017, 2019, 2020, before COVID, 2021, and now we just got them again in 2022. So we really have more counts for those four, for those two intersections on 69 than ADOT has. So ADOT has used some of our old reports for their base work. So, yeah, I think in this particular case, I've been monitoring it for a while.
And I'm sure you would agree, without putting you on the spot, but a traffic signal is a very badly needed mitigation measure.
Well, I think that it is, it is going to ultimately be needed-
Okay.
-as far as it's needed today. I'm not sure that that would be beneficial necessarily, and also, you need to remember, or know that if you put a traffic signal in an intersection before it meets very specific warrants that are national guidelines, the first person that gets injured, that's where they go, because you really, you just don't want to do that. So, we wanted to use this study to figure out, what are all the things together that are going to take, how much longer is it going to take before a signal is warranted? And then, that information would come to the town, and we would work out, you know, how do we, how does that signal get done? Because ADOT doesn't have a, just big pot of money sitting out there. So, you know, ideally, there would be a situation where there could be some participation, but where, that's not our job. Our job is to say, will it meet warrants without this project? Will it meet warrants with this project? And what is the cause? Who causes that warrant to be met? Because it's not just 54 townhomes.
Right. Thank you.
Another question for you, just another kind of hypothetical for you, because this occurred a couple months ago. We had a motorcycle accident right in front of Village Boulevard not too long ago, it shut down the highway. Again, and it was a cluster. I'll just be very honest with you with regard to traffic. And, of course, Village Way does go out to Bradshaw, but unless you know the alternate ways in and out of the Country Club, a lot of people were very thoroughly confused, because there's no other ingress egress that takes you over to Fane or anywhere else like that, unless, of course, you know your way through the Country Club. So, what, what do you propose, or what should be proposed for emergency ingress egress for this development?
Okay, let me make sure I understand your question. So, the crash occurred on 69 at Village Creek.
It was Village Boulevard right there, it shut down the highway, so it could not, people could not exit there. Again, there's no way to get from that area over to Fane and exit, and, you know, basically disperse through the community, unless, again, you know your way through the Prescott Country Club from Bradshaw going over to Turquoise. I honestly think this is where, again, we were, you know, several years ago, we were talking about emergency ingress egress, emergency evacuation plans. We have no signage or anything in that vicinity that tells people where to go. And that, I guess that's my point. And I think that, you know, I think that needs to be addressed as well, before we put more and more, you know, vehicles in this area, because it really, until we get a stoplight, which I hope we do, because honestly, I don't see this going without a stoplight at Village Boulevard and 69. I really don't. I can't support that. And without it, taking all that traffic to Bradshaw, to me, is just, it's a recipe for disaster.
So you're, so you're saying that, that one of the reasons that you would like to see the signal there is because that that could take people west and south onto Village? I mean, there's certain locations along 69 through this area where you're right, if someone, when there's a crash, it's hard to divert them. Where do you take them, all the way over to I-17? And the town, I think it's done a best job they can, of trying to plan for that, and so now Village Way, if those of you who are familiar with Mulberry Farms, the PV Rentals Project, that they are the, they are required with their development to start building Village Way-
That is correct.
-south, and then, I think it's the cabin development down at 169 is pulling it north, and everyone that comes in is having to put those pieces together so that you can achieve that paralleling route. So that is, and you're right, other than that, it is going through the Country Club, and fortunately, it doesn't happen a lot, but-
Okay.
Yeah. I hope that answered your question. I don't know, there's another round.
Honestly, I think, I think that, I think we need, we need to partner with the town, and especially in that area, for signage for alternate routes-
Okay.
-should the highway be stopped, be closed, because literally, there would be, again, unless you know your way through the Country Club, there are bottlenecks from basically Fane Road all the way to 169. If that section of 69 is shut down for whatever reason, people need to know the way out.
Right, I agree with you. And by having that Village Way south, at least then it's a public route that, and I know-
Yes, but that won't be connected completely, if I'm not mistaken, until a while back. I mean, it's going to be a while in the future, so.
Yeah, it's dependent on development.
Yes.
No, I understand.
So, that, that's a big concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a concern also, looking at this map, and being contingent to the senior community, and they have all of their roads and everything. You know that if there's a problem, they're going to start going into the roads into the senior community, and I think that it would behoove this development to sit down with the city traffic people and look at the roads that are within the general vicinity, and maybe some of those should be four-way stops, and it would alleviate a lot of the problems with the traffic flow.
Into the community to the east?
I'm sorry?
Into the villages at Lynx Creek community?
Yes, yes. We had an issue with Grandville with their townhomes on Santa Fe Loop, and we were able to get a four-way stop at Santa Fe Loop and Tuscany because of the duplexes that were going to be built right there. It took a while, but I can see that there could be some problems in the future with the villages and this development that should be addressed, and the people that live in the villages probably would appreciate that also, if it were addressed.
Well, we're, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Fains, but I mean, I'm happy to talk to the town with Boyd Robertson, or whomever else that you would prefer I speak with, and if there's anything like that, that he thinks, or that the town thinks that we should be taking a look at, we can certainly do that. Now, understand, though, that the villages at Lynx Creek is a private community, so those aren't public streets-
I understand that.
-but if there are some where they're, have some concerns, which would be ones that this project would potentially have a route to go through, we could certainly take a look at that.
I just think it's one more thing that you ought to address.
But one of the things I think is a little nice about this is, this is on the outside, this is, you get to this project first before you get to-
You get to them.
Any other questions of the applicant for the commission?
Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner King.
Not questions per se, but just some comments. So, the write-up is very good, I think, you know, that I agree that the mix of inclusionary building is huge, that they're going to be a little bit, you know, priced lower is important for people who are trying to, you know, get into some more nice affordable housing. I think that's great. I am very concerned about the bottleneck there as well. I do not like the idea of constituents using the Country Club for the ingress egress to go around that area. I think that there's cars that speed through there already. There's a new preschool that's just been put up there, and so, talking about kids and yelling, "Kids, you can drive by the preschool," they yell very loudly, but so that, that does worry me. And then in addition, just in this area in general, and I frequent this area a lot, so, and this might be a little bit ancillary to this development at issue tonight, but there's not a lot of, and when we say amenities, I mean amenities that are not related to this, such as grocery store. So if you live in this area, where do these people get their, their food from? I personally have young kids, they actually go to that preschool, Little Explorers Learning Academy, and if I need to get some dinner for the night, I have nowhere really to stop to get some strawberries, or meat, or anything of that sort. So, I do think that this, where this is located in vicinity on the 69, I really like the idea of possibly seeing some commercial, you know, buildings going up there rather than residential, to maybe help alleviate some of the, the concerns and the stress of, of our citizens here that need amenities outside of, like, their home amenities to, to, and, and yes, there is the Maverick, but you can't really get food or, you know, drinks there. So, those are, those are my main concerns, is the bottleneck, because it is the thoroughfare down and back, and anybody who, you know, there's a lot of communities, citizens here that actually work down in Scottsdale, Phoenix, and they use that as their thoroughfare every single day, so I think that's one we really, really need to protect, just for the community and the overall wellness of, of our people here in the community, but then also, the idea of having some more commercial venues readily available for the, the people who, who need to, to have those based upon all of the individuals and the already approved plans that are within this region. That was a long comment, thank you.
I just, I'm curious, when you, you're mentioning the preschool, where is the preschool?
It's right next to the middle school, so it's-
Okay, so on the other side of 69 down there?
It's, yeah, mhm.
Okay. And so that would be, yeah, appropriate, they put that by that signalizer.
But if you do, if you divert, they're going to divert right there, and they're going to turn right past the middle school. It's called Bradshaw Mountain, it's off of Turquoise, is what the street is, off Turquoise right there.
An Old Chisholm, yeah.
Can I ask a question of Armando? I don't, Fernando, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, in the current zoning that it is right now?
Yes.
If, as an example, if- If, as an example, if- As a facility that's at the entrance to the country club now, the Maverick, if they had decided that they wanted to go in this location, would they have had to come before our board?
No, they would not. They would go before you for the preliminary development plan, but you'd be hard pressed to deny the use because it would be allowed by matter of right.
Which would bring in a lot more traffic than what we're talking about here.
Yes.
I guess that's, I guess that's my concern when we look at something like this, where we're adding this amount of units, 54 units, to a facility that has, already has 400 and some in the original facility, and then what we've approved already on the north, is if commercial went in here, it would multiply the traffic going in. And I don't think that ADOT would suddenly say, "Oh, now we need a traffic light." But it would definitely expand the amount of traffic that would come through that intersection. So I guess when we're talking about this, what I like about this is the 54 units is really a limited amount of traffic compared to if that all developed as commercial, which it's set up to do now, would cause a lot more traffic than what we're looking at. And so I guess that's why I favor a design like this over commercial coming in there. Now, maybe the people that live in there would like to have more commercial, but when you bring in commercial there, it's not just going to be for your little community, it's going to be for everybody up and down the highway, and there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in there. So I guess that, I'm not trying to disagree with you at all, but I guess that's what I look at when I look at something like this, is we're somewhat limiting the amount of traffic that's going to come into the area just because of the design and the amount of units that are in there. That's my only opinion.
That is true. Realistically, there is a project, let's say they decide they don't want to move forward with the rezoning of this property, and they still want to do residential. There is a scenario that you can possibly have worst case of traffic on this for another project that they can possibly go into and not need a rezoning. And again, you would be hard pressed not to approve that project because it would be allowed by matter of right. That would be more taxing on the residents than this itself. In regards to stop signs or four-way stops, that would be something that the town would have to consider on public right-of-way, on the private roads from the village, if they choose or want to have stop signs put on by the developer. I'm sure the developer would want to, would accommodate a stop sign on one of those streets. But in regards for the developer to decide to put a stop sign, we couldn't force them to do that. That would have to be done by the town of Prescott Valley, not by the developer. Of course, we'd have them pay for it, but we would put it in, if they were required after the study was done. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Fernanda.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant from the commission? Seeing none, I'll, basically, what we'll do now is invite the public up to comment. Any questions that are asked, please direct them to the commission through the chair. What we'll do is that if there are any questions that need to be answered, we'll have the applicant and staff go ahead and answer those after public comments. Public comment is about three minutes long, so, you know, please keep your remarks brief and to the point. And again, if there's any questions, we can have them answered after public comment. So with that, we'll open the floor to public comments. So if there's anyone wishing to comment, please come on up.
Come on up, yay. Yeah, please do. We want to hear. Yeah, I want to, I do too.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, my name is Debbie Winter. I'm the president of the Quailwood Meadows HOA. I'm concerned about the TIA and all of the traffic that's already going up Bradshaw Mountain to turn left, to go down I-69 to get to I-17. I just want to reiterate that Mulberry Farms is going in. We have traffic from the villages that already uses Village Way to get onto Bradshaw, to turn left onto 69. And now we're going to put more homes in there to turn onto Bradshaw Mountain. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't be afraid, we don't bite.
I'm a resident of villages of Lynx Creek.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Frances Strach, Lot 112. I'm just a little confused by the diagram, excuse me. I see where the homes are, and then the two parcels on either side of Village Way, I don't quite understand that. The one looked like landscape, and the one to the left, I'm not sure what that is.
We'll definitely get that answered for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public? Out of curiosity, do we have anyone from the villages at Lynx Creek, H.O.A. board out in the audience? All right.
Anybody from the community?
Okay.
Oh, there's one.
My name is Rob Schaefer. I currently live in the villages at Lynx Creek, Lot 424. I question the properties, I'm sorry, I can't look up, but the properties that are still zoned commercial that are being left at the entrance there, does that still open them up to commercial?
That is correct, they would, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Here comes somebody.
My name is Christine Corwin O'Brien. I live at the villages at Lynx Creek. And the reason why my husband and I decided to live there, because it was a 55 and over community. We love the community.
Speak a little bit more into the mic.
We love the community. And it is very nice to have, I love children, I have grandchildren, don't tell them I said this, but I wouldn't want them living with me or around me. But it's, it would be very nice to have the 54 homes be 55 and over. There are so many going in and around the area, like the Dollar Tree, all those homes that are going into that area are going to be not age-restricted. So we would like to have something that could be, where it could be 55 and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I live in the villages too.
Go a little closer to the mic.
Okay. I'm Linda Jacobson, and I live in the villages too, about 20 years now. And I think my only concern was with the traffic study, is that she mentioned it was done in February. And most of us are here part-time, and we come in the summer. So why wasn't the traffic study done in the summer? And there's twice as many people.
That's a great question, and we can definitely get that answered for you.
Yeah, my name is Brad Jacobson, and I live in the villages also. And I had, I have had in the past, because of the development going on in the west and this development, and the only way for us, if we want to go out to 17 on 69, you have to go down to Bradshaw Mountain to get out. And all this additional traffic on that frontage road is going to be very interesting, especially coming down from the development on the west. And that concerns me a little. The other thing that concerns me is if this community is a, anybody and everybody can live their community, which means that now you have children out there, number one, the traffic probably is going to endanger them because there's going to be a lot of volume of traffic. And it's also going to be a problem for the people in the villages who are a little hesitant with children running around in their community, and that's what they're going to be doing. The other thing is, if you've spent any time trying to turn into Village Way off of 69, coming down from Prescott, it's very scary, especially the volume of people coming back and forth on there.
You're referencing Village Boulevard, correct? The main-
Yeah, going in on Village Boulevard. If you're coming down from Prescott and you pull into that center lane, you know, it is really, really a concern. And that, I think, should be addressed to stop the traffic coming in there so it can operate like a signal would.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. I'll invite staff up to, it seems like we can easily answer one of those questions, then I'll ask the applicant to come up and address the traffic questions.
Yes.
The one question with regard to that one parcel, maybe, you know-
Oh, and I actually did speak to a lady, and I'm going to use the mouse here. Let's see if I can find it, there it is. So these two parcels were the ones that she had questions on, and those two are not part of this project. Those are going to stay commercially zoned, and they are separate ownership, so, yeah. Those don't have an impact on this project at all, or is the zoning match.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead and come back up.
Again, Toby White with Lee Engineering. Now, hopefully you all saw, I was trying to make sure I heard, so I wasn't taking the best notes, like, I wasn't taking notes, so please help me, I don't mean to forget one of the questions.
So the first question would be, the traffic study was first conducted in February, and they're, you know, wanted to know why wasn't that, why wasn't something done, like, in summer when there's more residents and more vehicles?
A very good question. First of all, we, as I think I mentioned, that I've done traffics, we've done traffic counts out here for several years, and at different months each time. But that aside, one of the very first things we do is we seasonally adjust the volumes. We get counts done in February, we apply, and ADOT helps us do that because ADOT keeps track of how volumes vary. We also, on top of growing traffic to account for the Mulberry Farms and the Desert Pines, we also do a background traffic growth that is also reviewed by ADOT. And it's the same rates or same adjustments that were made for things such as the 69-169 big ADOT study that came up with the Roundabout. So this is a consistent way we do this each time so that there is, that yes, it does take into account, and we have to look at not just average, it's the peak season traffic conditions. But that's how it's done. So I hope that answers that question.
I think it does. The second question, of course, you know, this would probably be addressed with, you know, if ADOT ever comes back and says their signal's warranted, but turning on, basically turning left from 69 onto Village Boulevard.
Yes, you know, I'm glad someone brought that up, because normally, the way that you, without trying to go off on a tangent, the way you warrant a traffic signal is based on, you have to have a lot of people trying to turn left off of the minor street. Well, anyone who's going out Village Creek Boulevard, you don't use that to turn left. What do they do? They go down to Bradshaw Mountain Road where the signal is. And actually, there's the whole percentage of people going left versus right, it's relatively small, but anyway, that's how people get out. So yes, they go down, and they use the signal at Bradshaw Mountain Road to turn left. Here, the warrant is not going to be based on people trying to turn left out of Village Creek, because you can't, nobody does it. What it's going to be warranted on, and it's very unique to have this situation, is the southbound left. That's the left, just as the gentleman explained, you're coming from Prescott and, or Prescott Valley downtown, and you're trying to turn left off of 69 onto Village Creek. That volume against the opposing volume is what would warrant that signal. So yes, we have, that's a big focus of our study, and that's what we're going to present to ADOT.
That was it for the questions with regard to traffic?
There was one, there was a question about people going down to Bradshaw Mountain Road where that signal is.
Yes.
There is actually a lot of, not to, still got, it's a separate issue than the signal being warranted at Village Creek, but there's a lot of capacity left at Bradshaw, 69 and Bradshaw, and ADOT likes to remind us of that, that that's a big intersection, and it has, that many people are turning left off of that, and so it's going to-
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission, any other questions or comments from the commission? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve zoning map change 22-005 with the condition stated in our packet, compliance with all town code provisions and preliminary development
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve zoning ZMC 22-005 with the following conditions that are in our packet, along with the action item, PDP 22-
We got to take it separately, Commissioner Griffiths.
Oh, I thought you said together, sorry, sir.
It's all right. So Commissioner Griffiths has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
No.
Is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 22-007 with the conditions stated in our packet?
I'd like to make the motion to approve PDP 22-007 with the following conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
No.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
No.
Fortunately, with a vote of three to three, motion does not pass. With that, we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is call to public. Consideration and discussion of comments from public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, not a motion to adjourn. Could I roll back and ask another, a question, please?
With regard to-
Pardon me?
If anything's been voted on, no matter.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You stand adjourned, thank you.[1768.13]